Okay, we'll go ahead and call the City of Preu Common Council meeting October 7th. One of the pleasurable events led by Councilman Lee and invocation by Councilman Tom Guston.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, that this republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father and Father, we ask that you be with us tonight as we're conducting city business. Give us the wisdom to make the right decisions. Give us the strength to use that wisdom to make those decisions. In brothers in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Hey, Tom. We'll call.
Holland.
Here.
Guston.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Ramsey.
Here.
Bowman. Langwell.
Here.
Crowe Scott.
Yes, here. Okay. Next, we have the reading and correcting of the journal. Move we suspend the rules and dispense re-reading and correcting of the journal. Second, it's been moved by Councilman Crowe Scott and seconded by Councilman Guston to disperse the rules and dismiss the reading and correcting of the journal. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communications. Sheriff, do you want to report tonight?
I sure will. For the Preu Civic Center, September 2019. Total number of guests served is 284. Meals, 94 meals. Meal amount is $962. Rent was $256. Catering brought in $1,078. Total paid to the city is $358. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to unfinished business. We have ordinance 16, 2019.
Ordinance 16, 2019, and ordinance for additional appropriations.
I move we adopt ordinance 16, 2019.
First is six.
It's been moved by Councilman Crowe Scott and seconded by Councilman Guston to adopt ordinance 16, 2019. And Mrs. Flory, again, it says the...
This has actually three different funds on it. This is the PD 240 fund for bulletproof vest program that they're in, the ordinance violation fund, and the criminal investigations funds. Those are local home rule funds that we only usually budget $10,000 a year, but they would like to spend more than that. It isn't tax money or anything. It's a home rule fund, so.
Okay. Any questions up here? Any questions from the audience? Okay, you're welcome.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Crowe Scott.
Yes. The motion passes. Next, we have ordinance 17, 2019.
Ordinance 17, 2019, and ordinance for additional appropriations for the Preu Public Library.
Move we adopt ordinance 17, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Crowe Scott and seconded by Councilman Lee to adopt ordinance 17, 2019. So we have a lot of representatives in library. Would you like to talk a little bit about it? What we're gonna do with the extra money? If you need to come up to the microphones so that everybody listening at home can hear you with the magic of television.
The $50,000 that we're asking for is from the money, the $75,000 that the county paid for county cards. And it is not in our budget at the present time, but it is money that we now have put into a savings account that we are asking to appropriate for maintenance to the building, upgraded windows, upgraded electric landscaping, the heating and air conditioning system maintenance and upkeep, and general building upkeep of the original library building.
Okay, so this is money that the county generated from the additional library cards, and then it was transferred to the city?
Yeah, it was transferred to the library. They paid for 1,000 library cards.
Okay. And since we're in charge of the library, they'd like to spend the money. So you don't want... Sounds fair?
Sounds fair.
Sounds fair.
Yes. Thank you.
Any questions up here?
Nope.
Any questions from the audience? Okay, you're welcome.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Crowe Scott.
Yes. The motion passes. Next, we have ordinance 18, 2019.
Ordinance 18, 2019, and ordinance establishing salaries and wages of the civil city employees and appointees for the year 2020.
Move we adopt ordinance 18, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Crowe Scott and seconded by Councilman Langwell to adopt ordinance 18, 2019. Again, that's what we talked about at the budget meeting. We had budget hearing last week, and we did not have any commentators. So this is establishing the wages for the employees and appointees for 2020. Any questions from the audience? Any further up here? It's a quiet bunch. Welcome.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Crowe Scott.
Yes. The motion passes. Next, we have ordinance 19, 2019.
Ordinance 19, 2019, and ordinance establishing the 2020 annual salaries for all elected officials of the city of Preu, Indiana.
Move we adopt ordinance 19, 2019.
Second.
It's moved by Councilman Crowe Scott, seconded by Councilman Ramsey to adopt ordinance 19, 2000... I'm sorry. Yeah, ordinance 19, 2019. Okay. Same as the previous ordinance, this is just for the elected officials for next year. Questions? No? All right, welcome.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Crowe Scott.
Yes. The motion passes. Next, we have ordinance 21, 2019.
Ordinance 21, 2019, and ordinance for additional appropriations and, excuse me, and ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for the 2020 budget.
Move we adopt ordinance 21, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Crowe Scott and seconded by Councilman Lee to adopt ordinance 21, 2019. This is establishing the rest of the budget for 2020. And obviously, for establishing a budget, then the tax rates would correspond to raise those funds. Any questions? Any further up here? Welcome.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Crowe Scott.
Yes. The motion passes. And we have a director sign this, so I'll pass it this way and then pass it back down this way, please. Be sure to check that. If you wrote it "I" or not "A," okay? And we can move on to new business. Moving on to the last item on new business, the interlocal agreement. The city of Preu and Miami County and the Miami County Prosecutor's Office to the front of new business. That's what the microwaves are for.
Well, no, that's funny.
Okay. Okay. So the interlocal agreement is for... Move we consider the interlocal agreement as an ordinance, remember?
There is not an ordinance.
No? All right. Move we consider the interlocal cooperation agreement.
I second that.
It's been moved by Councilman Crowe Scott, seconded by Councilman Guston to consider the interlocal agreement, interlocal cooperation agreement. Does it need the same consideration of that?
Yes, just might as well.
All right. Welcome.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Crowe Scott.
Yes. Move we adopt the interlocal cooperation agreement.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Crowe Scott, seconded by Councilman Lee to adopt interlocal agreement. Guston, do you want to talk about this a little?
Yes, and I know Chief, or Assistant Chief, if he needs to speak further. But in the past, the Preu Police Department had, were able to... In the past, the PPD used to be able to solicit their diversion contracts for the prosecutor's office in a way. At some point during the change of administration of the prosecutor's office, the prosecutor's office took all that responsibility and duty back. That way they could keep the funds in-house. And doing it, switching this allows us to have more freedom of the monies generated because the way it was set up is the money from the deferral programs in the past would be applied to police funds even though they're managed and held by the prosecutor's office.
I have a question. I thought we were talking about the economic development department.
No, we moved this to the front.
Oh.
We made it back. No, you guys... He wanted to move it to the front because he has to go somewhere. And that's why we're in interlocal agreement.
That's why we're...
Okay. Okay.
Keep going. No, you're fine.
To his birthday, he wants to leave early.
My wife scheduled a dinner that I didn't know about. That was supposed to be a surprise at six, so.
Surprise.
So the police department wants to play a larger role in offering these deferrals for traffic, minor traffic violations and whatnot. And the way we had set up at the prosecutor's office now is any funds collected between $10,000, for the first $10,000 collected, we would split the funds 50/50. For any funds collected between the amounts of $10,000 to $20,000, we would split 60/40 in favor of the PPD. And then for any funds in excess of $20,000, we would split in favor of our Preu Police Department, 70/30. So it's gonna hopefully and ideally generate more money in the police budget. I know at one point Chief Meeks informed me that they used to have, are generating about $100,000 a year from these deferral programs, and that was cut from their budget because the prosecutor's office wanted that money back and wanted it on their own. Thankfully, good working relationship with the prosecutor's office now, and I think it'll be a big benefit to the police department because the way it is now, if we want these funds or want to purchase something with some of the funds generated, we would have to go request that to the prosecutor's office, and then they have the final say. I meant, under the state law, the money prosecutor's office collects doesn't specify that they have to buy the police items, but that's what it's intended for. Now we'll have a little more freedom with that.
This has been nine years in the process.
Hasn't been easy.
No, and I'd like to speak in favor as well. The only thing I had questioned originally was, you know, you have this tiered system, so it makes it sound like it creates a quota, right? Over $10,000, and we start to get more money generated from that. But I was assured by the chief that there would be no quotas, and I wanted to just make this statement so that it's reassured to the community that it's not a quota-based system. They're not going to be using this to overly pull people over just to get their next quota and hit that next bar. So, but it is something to help us generate funds where we struggled to get those funds before.
The way it is now is if we would have no incentive to try to push people to do a deferral program if they get a ticket because we can't solicit those because ultimately it falls on the prosecutor, which it still does now, however, with this agreement, the prosecutor will come to City Hall once a week, once every other week, and sign deferral programs and whatnot. He'll ultimately still sign off on them, but we know the criteria and who's going to be eligible, and we can solicit those. And the way it is now, say if this, say if there were $10,000 generated from the deferral programs offered by the county, we would get a very de minimis portion of that. And if $10,000, if this goes into effect, then of that $10,000, we're getting back half, so, yes. It'll be beneficial.
And the full money is what people pay in order to keep from having to have a...
Points on their license.
Points on their license.
Right.
Yeah. Any questions from the audience? Any further questions up here?
Just semantics. If you look at page two or three, paragraphs two and three, it's spelled out properly, but in both two and three, you listed the prosecutor's office and then the PPD, and then it was 60/40, and then you went back and said, if it was 40, 60, and 30, 70, then it would follow as to how the paragraph is written. You understand what I'm saying? It says the prosecutor's office should get 60/40, but then you come back and say the PPD will get 60 percent. So if it's 40, 60, the prosecutor, it would be in the same order as the, as the, as the two entities in the paragraph. That's all I was saying. Because when I first read, I was saying, okay, prosecutor's gonna get 60 percent, but then they came back and said, Preu's gonna get...
Oh, because the prosecutor listed it first.
It seemed like if, yeah, if they're gonna be listed first, the percentage they get ought to be listed first, and the PPD ought to get... So I don't care whether you switch it around with PPD and prosecutors and...
The legal system matters.
60/40. I don't know. I'm just...
Right. That's funny, because I know there's been four different attorneys' eyes on this, the county attorney, and now I, the prosecutor and his deputy prosecutor, and just one of those things that we weren't looking at.
I'm a last guy. What can I say?
Right.
It seems like it should flow as to...
Yes, right.
Agree?
Okay.
So if you want to make a change, I'll be happy to go for it.
Otherwise, somebody later on's gonna come back and say, no. It clarifies, though.
I know. I know. But did you...
Right. Yeah. Any further? No? Okay, welcome.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Crowe Scott.
Yes. The motion passes.
Well, since we have such a nice audience here, I think it'd be a very nice time for us to say happy birthday to our birthday boy.
As he may always say.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you, young pup. Happy birthday, dear Dustin. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, Tom. All right. Your wife just called, said send you home.
I got it.
All right. We'll move on to new business. I guess we already have moved on to new business. We'll move on to ordinance 22, 2019.
Ordinance 22, 2019, and ordinance of the city of Preu's Common Council creating an economic development department.
Move we consider ordinance 22, 2019. Second. It's been moved by Councilman Crowe Scott and seconded by Councilman Guston to consider ordinance 22, 2019. Welcome.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Crowe Scott.
Yes. Move we adopt ordinance 22, 2019. Second. It's been moved by Councilman Crowe Scott and seconded by Councilman Guston to adopt ordinance 22, 2019. Is this not what we did three months ago?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Okay. So what are we doing now?
Well, we're doing it on the part of the city. What we did before was on the part of the county.
Okay. Sure. Why don't you come up and entertain us?
It's a hard act to follow, you know?
It's good, it's good.
We can probably sing something to you, too, this time.
I'm glad we could accommodate, so you could get up there and practice. So, no, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. And you're right, we did this about three months ago. But we did it with the county because we were anticipating a project that's gonna be, we still believe it's happening out at Wilson with Shaw Building out there. But because this particular project that we're bringing or we think is gonna happen is within the city limits, there's a requirement then for the city to create this economic development department. As it has the power to do that within the city limits of where the project's gonna take place. So that's what we're considering tonight is ordinance 22. It's pretty much the same format that the county did for the other project where it was by statute, there's a three-member board that the mayor selects an appointment, the county council makes a nomination, and the city council makes a nomination to the mayor. But it's the mayor's appointees for this three-member board. And again, this is not to, this is not doing away with the Miami County Economic Development Authority, but the powers of this economic development department that you're creating are pretty specific as it relates to state statutes whereby what they're going to do is look at certain incentives that we may be offering. In this particular case, a project that we believe is gonna happen out in the Broadway Landing area. And they're gonna hold a public hearing. They're gonna evaluate the project. They're gonna act as an independent commission between the Economic Development Authority and this body to make a recommendation of this body of whether that level of incentive is needed to help promote this type of project. And so specifically in this case, we're talking about tax incremental financing funds or TIF funds. And so what'll happen is once this three-member board is established and it's, the approvals are made, they will conduct a public hearing. They will evaluate the project, and then they'll provide a written report back to this board or to this council for their consideration in approving a particular incentive package or not.
Okay.
So, and I think you've already done, we're asking you to, to not consider or adopt.
I mean, to say, there's no money being appropriated, so it's fine to do that. So
in our head is that we can get all the appointments and everything made before your next city council meeting. So at that city council meeting in November, then we'll be bringing the actual project to you for your evaluation and approval.
Okay. How's the one at the base coming, okay?
Good. We're close.
Close?
On closing. Yes, sir.
Good. Thank you. Good, good. Any questions for Mr. Tim? Do I understand what we're doing? Any questions, audience? All, uh, welcome.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Crowe Scott.
Yes. The motion passes. Next, we have, okay, now, um, Mr. Tim.
Yes, sir.
Now that we've established this, when we need to appoint people right away?
Yes, we do. And that could be done at this meeting if you'd so like, or there'll be a form letter that I'll provide you that if you wanna pass it around to the other council members and come up with a recommendation that...
We need to do something so that you can bring it to the next meeting, right?
Right.
When do you want to do your appointments? Appointment. You've got one that's gonna be selected by you. The Miami County Council, have they discussed anything yet?
No.
Okay. And we haven't either, obviously.
Well, we have to do that in a public hearing, yes?
Hmm?
Do we have...
No, we can do it here.
Right, which is a public... I'm saying, do we have to make that appointment in a public hearing?
Well, the council has to make a recommendation, and I don't know if that is a, I don't think that's necessarily a formal...
You make a recommendation. You make a recommendation to the mayor, then he makes the actual appointment. You're making a recommendation on who you want as the council's representative on this commission, but the appointment itself is actually made by the mayor.
He's also gonna... That's in addition to his one? He's selecting?
Yes.
Okay. So are these on a three, two, one year?
Yes.
So will the first one expire at the end of 19?
Yes, and that would be the councils, and then...
This one?
It would work backwards, just the opposite from what the counties did. So the mayor's appointment would be for the full three-year term.
Yep.
The city council's appointment, or your recommendation, the mayor appoints that would be for the two-year. And then the county's appointment, if he so chooses to, or nomination, if he so chose to put that person on, that would be for one year then.
Ending December 31st of 19?
Yes.
Okay. And then second one would be '20, and then third one's '21?
Yes.
Okay. So it's not a three, a full three years because of the time we're adopting it?
Right. But they can be renewed each year should they still want to serve.
Okay. Do I have any volunteers?
No.
I'll do.
There is your volunteer. Anybody else? Hold on.
I'll volunteer.
Well, we only need one.
Oh, okay. Well, then, let him do it.
All right.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, we recommend, uh, Lane Holland.
Lane Holland.
Okay. I'll accept that in our recommendation. Okay. Thank you. There you go.
Thanks.
Next, we have ordinance 23, 2019.
Ordinance 23, 2019, and ordinance to amend the city of Preu code of ordinance subsection 151.076A-10 and subsection 151.076A-11.
Move we consider ordinance 23, 2019. It's been moved by Councilman Crowe Scott and seconded by Councilman Lee to adopt, or consider ordinance 23, 2019. Welcome.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Crowe Scott.
Yes. Move we adopt ordinance 23, 2019. Second. It's been moved by Councilman Crowe Scott and seconded by Councilman Holland to adopt ordinance 23, 2019. Stacy Marja, come up and tell us what we're doing.
Okay. On our parking space ordinance, when the businesses come in, every one of them has to come through the zoning board of the O's. We have just a simple change in there on those two sections. For one parking space per 200 square feet of birth space instead of 100 square feet. And it would cover nine out of the 10 that have came through since I've been in position. It's more reasonable, basically.
That is more reasonable. Yeah.
How does that deal with the businesses located on Broadway?
Those are already existing businesses. These are from the beds.
Okay. These are new.
Yeah.
Okay.
So when someone comes in, new building, like, say, the O'Reilly, we just put in a variance from 34 spaces. Per the way the ordinance was written, when we put that through, they would've had to have 72.
It's kinda silly. I don't think 72 people are buying auto parts at one time.
Right. That's how most of them, more than they were coming through, so.
Thank you, Mr.
Okay. Anybody have any... Yes, ma'am?
Um, at the bottom of the first part of that.
Yeah?
I may be wrong.
Talk into the microphone.
Should it be formally or formally that it says?
Form, formally read as.
Okay.
I believe. Because it isn't formally until we, isn't formally until we adopt it. So formally is how it is.
Okay. Right here. Yeah. Because I thought it meant the way it was listed.
That makes more sense.
So it is formal.
I know, I know. Formal, like it's calm.
Right.
Oh, no, that, yeah. No, I'm like the 100 to 200.
So this'll cover, and this'll, paragraph 11, I don't, nobody's going to have any issues with that downtown. Is that eating and drinking established on smaller? Everybody should be covered as their existing downtown.
No, I mean, they already don't follow the ordinance on existing businesses there on Broadway, so.
Oh, I think you do.
We're making it lighter, not harder.
Okay.
I think better places coming in.
Oh, so it actually says 200. It's sitting at 100 right now.
Right now, it says one space per 100 square feet of building space. We're changing it to one space per 200 square feet.
Oh.